Before you start in about one minute, if you'll find your seat, thank you.
Okay.
We will be discussing the zoning ordinances and if you are a new community member and you would like to speak, uh it's going to be the same procedure as before to receive some of the microphone and say your name and address and then, um, are you guys?
Yes, you will.
So Nick with Rand Works is going to go first and then you'll have the community input if your questions are not answered, thank you.
You want to read the captions for the.
That is what the city council of the city of Paulup which is undefeated will be in a planning workshop facilitated by Rand Works Incorporated to collect public input for and answer questions about the in-development zoning ordinance.
Alright Mayor Council, so following the November nineteenth preliminary report from zoning ordinance, uh there was quite a lot of residents that came out and voiced their concerns and opinions about the ordinance. Um, since then, uh Nick and the team and I have worked together to try to address as many of those concerns that we could, um, within reason, obviously based on state law and what we're allowed to do as a general law type A city. Um, so tonight Nick has, uh, some of the recent changes that we've made, um, he's going to go over that and then if we have other questions or anything that may come up uh in the past few days, uh we'll talk about that as well.
Alright, uh, thank you so much for coming out. Uh, when you guys repeat, uh, audience number sometimes she's welcome back. Um, as Forrest mentioned, I'm going to start covering some of the changes that we made, uh, from the version of the zoning ordinance that you saw ahead of November ninth council meeting. Uh, so these changes consist of, uh, concerns or comments that they brought up at that meetings, uh, emails, um, or the written or, you know, in person, uh, comments that we have received, um, as well as recommendations, uh, from the, uh, city's, uh, the, uh, attorney. Uh, so I'll start with, uh, some of the things that we have removed. Uh, we removed two unnecessary provisions, uh, section one oh four, one oh five, one oh six, and one oh seven. These are things that are not necessarily relevant to zoning ordinance or, uh, that we may work against, you know, the heart of the ordinance. Uh, we removed the requirement to just continue, uh, open storage in residential districts, uh, within three years. We removed, uh, the requirement for a violator of this ordinance to schedule a hearing before the council, uh, and section one point zero six. Uh, we removed the requirement to send notice of, uh, the violation of this ordinance, uh, via first-class mail. It's the, uh, it's part of the first-class mail. Uh, we removed, uh, a few sections that were not relevant, uh, section one point zero seven, point zero zero two, uh, suspension expenses and leads, and section two point zero five, building inspection because they're not relevant to any of the zoning ordinance. Uh, we removed section four point one zero, point zero zero one, uh, regulated to allow the building materials by district. Uh, recent change at state level, uh, had prohibited cities from, uh, from, uh, prohibiting you to use any building material that would be allowed by the international building codes, so we had to remove this section. Um, uh, we, uh, set the, uh, the maximum height of, uh, fence on a private property at eight feet if that fence is located outside of a setback, but if that, uh, that fence is located in a setback, so it's closing to the street, we lowered that at six feet, uh, or lower than two six feet. Uh, we also included a provision that fences are located in front of a home, uh, must be smaller than four feet and have an open design to preserve sight lines at street intersections, uh, that are rapid. Uh, we removed a provision that, uh, no answer from the council on a rezoning request. Uh, within thirty days, we constitute an approval. Uh, we removed a requirement that, uh, the commission must provide, uh, a verbal report on review of, to council, uh, on review of a rezoning application. He was like, still, we have a court given. Uh, we removed the requirement to resubmit an application for conditionally permit and specify that they, uh, that application can be reconsidered, uh, after a certain period of time to save the, the process of having to resubmit that application. Uh, for the same relevance, we have mentioned earlier, section six point zero eight and six point zero nine, that we're building, uh, and see, those are already handled with other ordinance in my city. Uh, we removed section six point one one administrative exception. Uh, this is on recommendation from the city legal team, uh, at the home rule city or at the, at the general law city, uh, there's this power that's specifically enabled by the state of Texas. Uh, we removed the ten-day timeline for appeals of more decisions and, uh, the fifteen-day timeline for an action on those appeals. We removed the requirement to bring in adjacent property owner on a site walk for the preliminary filing, uh, of a, a, a view, uh, of a planned development district. We also removed the provision that the, uh, prethought interviews and sketch plan is not being an application for permit. Uh, so the sketch plan would, uh, would best some of these rights, but it would be, uh, so helps the state of the board of citizens. When that happens, if any board. Uh, we removed the requirement that either the applicant or their attorney, engineer, or architect must attend a very steep, uh, hearing. Um, and then in the definition, we removed the second sentence, uh, that actually the definition of accessory rolling unit specified that the unit must comply with the, uh, zoning standards, regardless of its regulated health requirements, I think, by, with the zoning, uh, restrictions. Uh, some additions we made, uh, we added a provision temporarily so in X land that is agricultural unless there is a development agreement in place with the city, uh, since, uh, section three point zero two. This is just to make sure that any property that enters the city at, uh, maybe in Philly and X land, uh, will be protected and, uh, certainly not all, uh, development going on that is, uh, how over that. Uh, well, we're saying that, I should say. Uh, within section three point zero four, uh, this is new standards. This is where we give some more specific information about, uh, uses that happens with the interaction with what's going on around them. Uh, and so we added a restriction for the sale of alcohol within three hundred feet of school or, uh, school or church. Uh, this is the, uh, baseline set by the state of Texas, so that's a problem to, uh, three hundred feet of school or church. Um, we added a provision, uh, to be consistent with the state's one-time allow of a patient to allocate a actual home. Uh, and that's specified that your home must be, uh, newer model and of a, uh, uh, that's the same size. Uh, I want to note that states that should have manufactured home includes a mobile home and a manufactured home, uh, and a code manufactured home. So we have, uh, uh, defined the ordinance of a mobile home that is still, uh, the consistent, that was so relevant. We also, uh, increased the required distance between sexual oriented businesses, which is one thousand feet. Uh, this was already in place, uh, in the city's, uh, building, uh, sorry, business regulations. And so we made sure, just so it's what's consistent with what's there. Um, we added a preference to the full ordinance, uh, to be forgotten offensive animal husbandry, specifically owning a couple of livestock on your private, private residential property. Uh, this is just, yeah, consistent with the city's ordinances, uh, same and the preference, uh, a mobile food establishment ordinance, uh, that is perfect of development. Uh, we changed, uh, the application requirements, uh, to move from digital submissions to, uh, sorry, physical submissions, digital copies of site plans. Uh, and we've got to specify the only, uh, the hard copies are only required once that site is approved, uh, so it was the very essence of that, so that. Uh, I added, uh, some clearer and expanded criteria for granting special exception permits, making the process a little bit more transparent, uh, and easy to walk through. Uh, another recent change at the state level was that, uh, has now allowed cities to consider financial hardship, uh, as a simple factor for ranging of variance, uh, so we moved this in that section, so this is the council can now consider financial hardship or variance. Uh, we put a provision to allow councils to waive pre-� review for planned developments, particularly what is even less intensive or smaller, uh, than what it's having to. To be at the process of the very unnecessary pressures. Uh, we added definitions for one hundred-year floodplain, five hundred-year floodplain, areas with special flood hazard, mobile food establishments, mobile fluid establishments park, uh, just a little bit of rock, some sort of park, and non-offensive animal. Uh, we changed the definition of extraterrestrial to your jurisdiction to make it more fluid and to make that say code language. And we also changed the family to specify, uh, that, uh, the structures can be a little bit, uh, more flexible, uh, than in terms of. Uh, those people. Uh, some smaller rewordings where, uh, I took the criteria for granting a special exception permit for non-comfulving structures. I think that out of section one point zero five and consolidated that all, as you said, point zero six, point zero zero four, uh, for clarity. Uh, we removed, uh, we worded section one point zero five, point zero zero three C one to require that construction, uh, usually looking within one year for any non-comfulving structure that damages less than fifty percent of their structure's value before the, uh, engine. We also reworded the boundary for the floodplain overlay so that it follows the one hundred-year and five hundred-year floodplains rather than be fixed on a map. And so we included the, uh, the, the district boundaries on the back end side track, just as a reference for you all. Uh, but essentially what this is saying, we will follow the boundaries of that, whatever, uh, however that may change over the years, just to, uh, uh, allow the city to not have to adopt an app amendment. If the floodplain boundary for the change, I'd do it through a budget study or through a letter. Uh, we moved to be allowed uses for the, and uses of official use permit for the alternative public overlay district to the use tables to consolidate all that and make it, uh, I mean, uh, we changed, uh, we're in handicap parking, sub school parking, and section five point zero two. Uh, and we reworded notice deadlines to specify that it is at least that many days before the hearing that notices are required. Uh, some new changes are we added limited commercial uses to the industrial district by conditional permit and these are course uses that would, it has to be more consistent with an industrial park. Uh, we changed, uh, the use allowance for bed breakfast to allow them in the downtown by conditions only. We changed, uh, these for grocery stores, uh, to allow them by condition only in excuse, uh, districts to make sure that there is great consistency with, uh, surrounding properties. Uh, we allowed full occupation in the downtown for, uh, district by conditional use permit, uh, because of the residential spaces that allow there. And we added, uh, mobile food establishment park, uh, which is allowed by official use permit in the downtown for and allowed, uh, by right in either of the special districts. Uh, finally, we had the animal husbandry, if not, it's an animal husbandry, uh, in residential districts, uh, where it is that, uh, by. Uh, then finally, some changes to the zoning designation for properties. Uh, again, this is all shown in the maps and highlights you have made. Uh, six hundred, six oh two, it's with the four, West Island one, so we changed, uh, residential to privately commercial. And five hundred more, uh, three, that's a change to private commercial as well, uh, starts with those. Uh, on North Port Street, on the northeast side, uh, behind the, uh, sales, uh, along Happy Thirty-Six. We have rezoned, uh, exactly, we've obtained the designation, uh, for the free property up to, or ten, North Porter Street, uh, to, from, uh, big potential to private commercial, uh, seven oh six, North Main. Uh, we split that parcel by the, uh, so the destinations, uh, the portion of that lot, so the part that, uh, uh, directly changing to Main Street and the change to Mid Federal and the rest as the main highway commercial. And then the two years plus, uh, one side of that as well as, uh, as long east side, uh, have been changed to Mid Federal as well. Uh, three oh six, North Bright Street, uh, had changed to private commercial, but I cultural. Uh, the head of hills subdivision has changed to residential. Uh, the arrowhead farm subdivision has changed to residential. Uh, parcels three, four, eight, five, zero, six, one, one, zero, one, have been changed to residential. Uh, parcel twelve, six, uh, one, two, six, zero, seven, and one, zero, zero, have been changed to, sorry, parcel one, three, 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 and that's the properties. Uh, uh, four oh six, North Main, four oh eight, North Main, and parcel one, six, six, one, and one, six, six, three, six, have been changed to, uh, changed to commercial with all along North Main Street. Uh, uh, one, eight, zero, eight, West Island one, one, eight, zero, six, West Island one, has been one, parcel one, zero, six, five, two, that's a change. Um. Yeah, uh, I.
Uh, in addition to all of the items that we did change, uh, we did meet with the appraisal district, um, chief appraiser, Tony Barnes. Um, and so we had addressed some of those questions and concerns that came up as far as how the appraisal office, uh, dictates rezoning or by first step. Um, so if Tom and you would have come up and kind of speak to what we had talked about, everything, sorry.
Hi, my name is Tony Barnes. I'm the chief appraiser in Merlison County. Um, I'm at this course and, um, I won't be able to start it. I don't know who's doing me, uh, and they had, I, one of the main questions that they had asked me was, what would this do to people homesteaded properties that are sitting off of the highways, off the thirty-six, off the one, uh, or in these other areas that, you know, they are going to zone us, you know. Um, I, I do want everybody to rest assured that a homesteaded property will always be valued as a residential property. Uh, the tax says that we must value each individual property at its best use. Um, however, there is one exception and that is if it's your residential homestead. Um, there are a couple of people here, um, whose parents and, you know, individually that live off of twenty-one and thirty-six and we have always considered twenty-one and thirty-six commercial, um, whether it's built or not, that isn't at its best use, but anybody who lives off of there has always been valued as residential, um, and that will not change no matter what this. Don't matter. Um, I have taken a look at it, um, of the current changes made with the previous one and it's about ninety-nine percent accurate of how our appraisal properties are in, so, um, I, I don't see this effect in our office and our appraisal board.
Thank you so much. And so, uh, now two questions came up, uh, during our conference. The representative, I have the bear review, uh, first one was brought up, uh, at the last council meeting, uh, this question, would the council, uh, like to point to zoning board of adjustments and obtaining zoning commission alongside the ordinance. Certainly, language specifies until appointed, uh, the board and the commissioner appointed, the city council will act as them, but, um, generally, it's not meant for that. But the organization specializes, uh, and goes back to those things more specifically, uh, so it's a question I want to put to the house to say, because if yes, it's something that's like. Possible.
To, to the back office, I mean. What are yours to somebody for?
So there's not a specific way that we have to do that, um, but the way that we currently do it is we have people that let us know on staff that they're interested in surveying. Um, a lot of cities go through an application process where, uh, residents are able to submit application, present it to the council, the council would hear interviews from the applicants and then they would, they would have to decide who's going to actually be appointed based on the interviews designated application. Uh, so there's, there's options on how to actually form it and actually get it set up and, I guess, express your desire on how you want to do that, if you would like to establish a, so we, a plan against only commission and another board of justice.
The two separate groups. If there are a minimum or maximum number of people.
So they can, they can be the same group, they would just have to be separate meetings. So they would have a one hearing called a zoning warrant adjustments and then one hearing called a planning zoning commission. But they can be the same individuals, so we're not going to, unless you would like to choose every one, but yes.
And number of people?
I believe it's seven in the ordinance and potentially two alternates, but that's other, we can also adjust. Or less, I mean, uh, usually seven is the standard.
So do you guys recommend with the council? If Sanders changed zoning, uh, board?
Yes, that, very good one, that.
Yes.
A little bit extra about, um, the, the, the.
Uh, so we both, I mean, yes, we will proceed with going forward. That was much of the point. Did, um, and then bring back the process of how you all want us to do that. Unless that wasn't tell us how you want to speak, heard that about. Thoughts?
In fact, the third question.
Correct, this is all citizen's way.
Okay, so we're not going to, so, uh, and how about we, uh, we thought that in a workshop in future for, um, every night.
Okay. Uh, and then the second question is, uh, this was next justified. Legal review, uh, many cities allow some staff to initiate a term, you heard the notes right, the whole, the city council, yeah. The owner, and, uh, if you be something to, 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 uh, as, felt, uh, what's allowed to be exact in the machine?
City staff versus a fifth?
Right, so the, either, uh, the property owner, the boss to be on the middle property, uh, the council can issue the process, uh, without, uh, popular or city staff.
So let's say a property owner. It's a, it'd be a country plus, and then we would, either the, or, uh, staff, and they should, yes?
Right, so you can tell me. You can, somebody, uh, to develop, some, uh, control, fly, professional, you need to, uh, develop, uh, professional, didn't have to, staff. Exactly, somebody has the place to develop, some of that time control, fly, potential, did you tell you, uh that show, did you tell staff members?
But the then traces with that.
And so it would be something like, but this is allowed, this is the second decade on the current. But then it's what staff. Who is, or did you start a position, something to figure out something like that, or you did build it to that?
Yeah. You guys like those in private, so the option like something.
And for the new program, it's ops, the property owner, it'd be difficult to understand the reselling process and what's that. You can achieve that, so it's, it's me that would have better understanding of that, they can basically. For that uh property owner, issue the process, but. Themselves what to do, um that's a con is. Um if that property is not directly involved, definitely directly involved. Actually, uh very hard process. I guess it's, it's probably. If you hate that. No, it's not necessarily that step. Exactly, so the uh reselling procedure would still have to, anybody in the whole uh. Lay down the sections called zero four, so it'll have to go through the various stages of uh. Writing zoning commission events, like that, they have a review of submission, their recognition to the city council and find the city council decision of whether. What is true of, is true of that uh. Of that question, basically, what this would do would be, it says to allow. Instead of a property owner coming to the city council at a workshop saying, I request this. Uh the hearing thing, I request this rezoning, there would be a city staff member said, I request this is on behalf of this. So it wouldn't eliminate any review procedures, it wouldn't skip the processes, it would start at the, at the, the exact same point, that's what the same uh people uh stages. But would basically just allow a different person, that does add another person.
Well, we're, we're going to be black.
So this is what, like, this uh.
So I think it's only giving another option, right?
Right, exactly, so if a, if a big developer wants to build a subdivision, uh they can have like, you know, the conversation with the city staff to, you know. Figure this is possible, is there a plan available, and then uh they can give the. Request to the city staff and come to the city council and request that, okay, so. This would be a situation where a city staff, when they're going out there, the whole work face, I, I think it'd be a good idea, you know, rezone this right versus property, if I'm going to initiate it. This would be based off of the plus of.
And is this final?
This is not, this is just. Yeah, so.
Which topic, uh basically, is the package or has a planning department? Look together, that's what I'll listen to. Is the planning department, it's. They get all that, they take, they take it to, on the floor, of course, he's been mad, you know. Your final, I'm, I'm honest, that, gather all, I'm an individual.
Right, it could be like any of those, but you have, have a department trying to assign somebody and it's not even a turn. Yes. Okay. They're going to leave, they said.
Who and what, how on setup, I'm.
Right, and so until that time, it's a, it's not a point of anything, so we missed it, the council is for a separate. Uh or at some period of point, that's the thing, so.
Right, they, they still have to figure out about this, right?
Right, and so, so that, so off words, uh but that decision wouldn't impact whether or not, and would like, would be a factified, see damage. Uh.
Okay, and now I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you a couple of comments, is there anything, you know, that maybe you're not concerned? And so, um, Mr. Altor, can I?
Yeah.
Uh.
That's too old. Hey, Oliver.
Hey, how you doing, Oliver? Nice to meet you.
If you can, Oliver, if you can give me, go over to the podium and make sure to state your name, please, just so that really happens.
My, my name is Oliver, after I've done, kind of know three sixty-five. But I own property within setting limits, and uh I think Nick, he had a back and forth on a, a property. Uh and I have that property that's on thirty-six. Right before the last bit of train tracks going south, uh that would be property ID one oh five, seven, four, and property ID one oh six, two, seven. Uh when we bought that, we, our plan was to put it more of a building on it, uh to lease it out. We tore down all the previous sculptures that were on us. And uh and I communicate that, so I just wanted to make sure that. If you can keep it residential, that land becomes useless, because no one wants to live next to train tracks next to a highway. You know, so, I, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure that we're not gonna. Forget about my request, keep that as right. To our original plan and our box.
Uh absolutely, yeah, so we did receive that and uh maybe we talked about it, and the two things that we're really absolutely into, like any of these. Questions are, uh first off, this is, this is state and it's, the thing is consistency, a used map. Um and second is case consistency with what's around, um so I, I understand highway thirty-six, it's, it's high light. Uh and uh tall, long, but uh, but then um. To put the future later, issue for future land use map displays that area as residential on both sides of highway thirty-six. Uh so that was uh mainly justification for obviously adding residential.
Right, and because he said that there were, there was a house on it. Right, and you, and that house was, you know, the wall, when we bought it, the last, there was a lady living in it, I felt sorry for her, I mean, you could see through the house, through the walls. Um and we, we knew we were going to spare that, so.
Right.
And we did, every truck that is on the, up, it's wrong, so, but.
Yeah, we can definitely look at it again, uh the other issue that we noticed was the access to that property, because it's got the, the driveway is. Lowered right there, so I would have to probably have a shared driveway on the private property in order to get a full of tech stuff that ingress, egress. Right, so that was another reason why we like it as, to make sure it's a little for now, and so you bring forward a development plan, and that's another we can bring to the council or the playing in zoning commission to get. That property rezoned to commercial to make sure that it does meet all of the other requirements for access and utilities and everything like that, because.
Right, so, I mean, the boarding sewer, uh water, I haven't. I don't know, so what the city Caldwell, that's completely, that's, that's another, something else.
What?
Entergy, yeah, entry, and they are, so, I have. Just their powers, but they're, they're also, but.
Yeah, we can definitely get a game, okay, well, I'll set up a meeting with you to that time, but.
That would be, yeah. Our thing.
Okay, we have this.
All right, uh thank you, Mayor, for hearing me tonight, that was, we're, we're all getting a little tired, so. I am not going to read my dissertation, so, no, no hand claps, please, but uh the bottom line is, I don't want to take up any more time than I have to, and I. Yeah, I think we're all tired, if I was thinking for myself, I'm tired, so I'm ready to go home. But the issue here tonight is obviously, we're, we're, the city is about to take a huge step. Um I have read through what's been provided, I've listened to the changes that they made, which were extensive, extremely hard to follow. I'll have that, I'll, I'll take it to a further level, impossible to follow without having prior, you know, compare, so really appreciate it, the fact that it helps me. But uh and so I'm, I'm gonna try to help everybody tonight, and I, I, I like that the, the city council consider something. You have a handful of people here tonight that could be here, there are a lot of people who would love to be here to listen to what is going on. The issue is, the way this is, this is being handled as far as the zoning. Obviously, zoning is good, even if it's bad zoning, I think, because bad zoning can always be correct. But the situation is, when we're entering into this, I think it's best for all of us to get the zoning that each and every one of us need to feel good about this. And by the way, if the city council today was to say, we give thirty days to the citizens of Caldwell. To be able to approach the city. And let them, let it be known what they would like to have their property zoned, there's no reason why this city council cannot say, okay. We're in the, we're in the designing state, you got color kids, and you can recover. And so everybody who's upset can be pleased, now we realize that this is any path, it's only over the ordinance. And then over time, we have changes that have to be made, we heard a, a system that can make those changes in the future. But at least you've got zoning on the books and everybody's happy. Nobody wants to go into an election here with everybody unpacked, or at least you didn't force enough, and all I got to say is, there's no reason not to make everybody a call up. You have this growth, you have the power, you're going to do whatever you want to do, and we understand that, but I think every citizen in here tonight deserves to have their property at a minimum. Zone the way they want, it doesn't matter to you, the, the appraisal district has already said that it's really not going to impact their values in the way they've been doing business. So if that's the case, it's not going to impact your paupers, your paupers and city money, which we're all concerned about. Then I think you just ought to say, we're gonna give thirty days, we're gonna announce it, we'll sit out later, everybody's got thirty days to get their changes in. If they don't get them, then no shame on them, too bad, we gave you thirty days, we announced it, you didn't do it, everybody that wanted a change got their changes made. We did the city council, did everything that we could to try to appease the citizens, which is their job, by the way, and I'm happy. Which is right. So. I don't seem to be the one who didn't do that, I understand you've got all these reasonings and all this stuff going on. You can, you can do your rules, you can do this now, any way you want to, you are the city council, we elect you for a reason, you are a representative. And you're supposed to speak for the interest of the people, and the people are here, and the people are speaking, and I think you're listening. So give us thirty days to get you what we want, it is changing, he's got, like I say, this is on our computer, he can do it real quick. All these issues, all these curricular issues can be settled over time, and believe me, this thing is not going to be finalized. Even if you agree to it today, it's all going to change in the future, you can change any of these to anything you want on any given day, once a month. So help us out, that's all I'm asking tonight, help the citizens of Caldwell, give us a chance to have what we want. We may not have it forever, because we have to change it somehow, but right now, to get this passed, to get it on the books. Why don't we just write the piece, I don't understand why that's wrong, and that's all I have to say, I just. It's. I would like to buy your thoughts, I don't live here, I know most of you, because we grew up together, and I'm gonna ask a question, it's really, we. There's a lot here, there's a lot of problems, and I was talking to it, one of those are two, and six months ago. I was thinking about it, it's a top office, it's not a performance, and I got, yes, we give you this. Set property that we need to, what, what is being occupied and held it, I'm only going to offer thirty minutes. Okay, but I have a question, why can't you like support us? When the property street, there's an exact same thing, you got the back, you see the exact same thing. Okay, and so I know that's a new wishful, okay, and I know there's process and all that. To be, I could form that, but I'd like to form there, I mean, it doesn't have to be a year there. But that, it's kind of weird, after twenty years, that you gotta come back and say, no, I was, but now I'm not, but maybe I will be. Okay, and that's my own peaceful, so shockingly, if you want to have a friend about it, if you call. I was glad to give you what I know, that how this all works out, that I'm going to do process, I'm here. On some session, I had a teacher property, luckily, I won't give you this one. I want to be, tell the listeners about, that's all that, tonight, I'm here to die a property on our job, and I want to know if you're last performance, and just gonna say, hey, it's not the performance of that, that's only my feeling, yeah. But you'll say, yeah, come on.
Absolutely, that's a big question, uh so, uh it's uh. Label it before we receive the notice, uh it's state acquired, notice sent to anyone who could be affected potentially negatively, unless. And I'm, I'm very sorry for that, I, I wish the language could be softer, state could be very limited. Yeah, I'm very sorry about that, um it's, of course, not our intention to scare anyone, it's, and so, um it's. A lot of that is a, is a condition of experiment in the next residential district, that's the one that I very, besides, uh. Right, so we, we want, we want to make sure that uh. When these companies are developed, that uh they are developed such that don't create a, a large usage because of uh. Often larger, the structure, maybe, but they got so much space, and there's so much activity that associated with them, yeah, full, full of small space. Uh we want to get permission to counsel just to make sure that they can uh, that the design of, of property and site of those places have a lot. Does the, the fact of surrounding properties, uh and so what we are seeking verification on, that we've got here, enter on is. Do uh property owners to, for use. to, uh, property owners to, for use, would only be allowed by conditions of, or maybe a bigger start that used after the ordinance adopted, these would apply for conditions. So if you're not a hundred percent sure about that, or still some verification. Okay, so.
Log, did I have to tell them that?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not looking, that's enough.
Yes, yes, so, good, yes, but, but I'll, your grandfather ended up, the only thing that we're getting verification on is is there a procedure that needs to be in place to bring initially permanent housing systems? Or are these used for, for, uh, for proposed use, using, and this is the best way I can explain it, and so. And it's, uh, you think about, we walk with, uh, uh, against the city not going to come after you, and maybe you just continue your juice, and stay back from doing anything. Uh, and we're just trying to figure out exactly what's the procedure for existing uses. So, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't give you more clear answer, I just don't want to give anything that.
I, I think I got you, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any more public comments, please give us the microphone.
I have a couple of slides.
So, how, how many days have existed?
Actually, we played a few different projects, they were. Up to today, so August twenty seventh was the first official workshop that we held, so over ninety days. I've received fifty-eight phone calls slash emails within that timeframe, um, some requested specific reasons why, some just had concerns, wanting to know what it was, wanted to know the property, what the property, they're very, they're very popular, you know. Uh, and so, out of, out of all those conversations, the majority of them are fine with this, but obviously, there's some that we haven't heard from. Um, and so, that, that's what these are, that's what they mean for. So, so I know we had a lot of questions, we had a lot of requests, I found. I've already done, we have a number of good brands for, so, indeed, or that you go back, now, it's, well. Uh, I'm about to decide, Mr. Bud Oliver, that's the only one that we didn't change. Oh, hold on, hold on, sorry, wait, Nate has a comment.
Uh, there were also a couple more, uh, like, uh, similar requests, uh, where the request is based on prospective use, and, and, uh, and so, you had to say the spots of, um, let's wait until we skip our top group stage, uh, just, uh, wanting to wait until a letter, and then there's, what later submitted to read on the property. And things like that, so there have been four or five, maybe, that have been, that we said, uh, like, no, or not right now, to, uh, but, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
It's all of those very good tables, it's last meeting, so we had to send out another letter, so it's to everybody in the city, exactly. And so, we, we keep, we, we're busy notes, and it's in the paper, and it's only, only end of, on the rest, or a bit of the most, uh, all my, we generally get it, so, I mean, we just, we cannot find the files. It just, it's something that's not been done, obviously, it's done by, well, we're working.
That's, so for every official hearing, uh, regarding the zoning ordinance, there will be a citywide notice that that municipal property owner, uh, that registered by, uh, municipal tax roll. And then we will send out, uh, specific, uh, letters to property owners and occupants to be affected by non-proprietary conditions for that or that's the standards. Uh, so, yes, so everybody, when the effect of my notice will be applied, before everyone, then, before this workshop. For another mission workshop, I'll state about wire, any, any, no, no, uh, occasion, aside, paper, so this, but, I mean, it's sent out, letters to all property owners.
Uh, yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, it's a lot of, I know, I'm not successful, but it's, but is there a way to see my land property, change about the. Uh, and please, do we have to do that?
Yes, so, um, all, the, the draft is posted, that's like updated, and that's the page, so, the draft, uh, as the additions highlighted, and any of the previous highlighted. Uh, I realized that the, the locals did not show up, uh, it was removed, so, uh, I could post it updated draft, or I said, or something, draft with those, those, like, the global lines, you can still see what was removed, uh, and all checks for that, that was. Yes, so.
Callotx dot gov forward slash zoning.
And I did have, if you just look up city of Caldwell, Texas zoning, it makes the first website that pops up on the.
You have something to add?
Yeah, uh, all, like, I haven't seen, how many people are really looking at, so, we're, I can comment, please, everybody, let them do what they want to do. How many people have a problem or an issue out of the business for all of them, you said four, five, four, right?
Yes, so, so, four or five more that were not granted, plus the, the people that I mentioned.
All right, so, all, all, all this, they had the big meeting, man, off the go, Facebook posts everywhere, nobody else has really come forward to say they have a problem.
Correct, I, every, every person that's come forward with a reasonable request, has at least been heard and has had response.
And we're here to respond at the very beginning, that's.
Exactly, yes.
I'm looking to see who you need at another.
And, and there will be, I think, thirty days, because there's a whole amount of hearing, so, the hearing that is, it's a bunch of tables, uh, last week, we want to come up. Uh, and that's one of whatever, we decided, bring that back up, and so it will come with the same, uh, public hearing for, even company questions, and until that, it's, until, they got, about that, it's, there it is. Comments, questions, and things like that.
Other than, like, Mr. Oliver here, the exact problem, they, you know, they demonstrated, and I solved it, some of these other people that are blaming that, so, and you have no idea what they are. Is everybody coming forward now?
Right, yeah, the whole.
It's August twenty fifth.
Well, I must say, I didn't know about the whole.
Right, yeah, we did, so, uh, the August, uh, hearing, uh, workshop that is hearing, so, center, and then we had another workshop in early October. Uh, so the August one, uh, no individual notices were mailed out, because there was a newspaper, and then we decided, oh, the October one, uh, that it wouldn't be back to notify, so, going forward, that we consider for notice, that we are gonna send out those letters. Uh, so we apologize that, that was, uh, spread out widely enough for the first one.
First, then, second, or not, that's all, no, no.
Okay. First, uh, of the, they were, and the utility bills, like, uh, that, uh, that was set out.
That's all, you too.
And that, and we realized, and we realized that's an issue, we thought, exactly, exactly on the property, which, yeah. I realized that when I was preparing the, the mailers, because that, that work here, and it's gonna be adjusted, so it's, it's a utility bills, for saying that's separate, it's all the tax roll. So essentially, the same, it's, 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 it's an official public hearing, and it's, it's not, it's not, it's just the citywide notice, will be sent out for every unofficial workshop as well. So, yeah, I apologize for that, for that oversight.
But I agree, uh, that's all, or said he had a meeting with you, and that they would do it, I had a meeting before, and a couple of other people said very understanding, open conversation, everybody was civil, so if you have a problem, I suggest that you do, like, all of it, get a meeting, address your issues, and give it to them.
Any more comments? Last thing, come on.
Uh, yeah, uh, no more comments needed, thank you all for coming, uh, back out, and, yeah, keep it coming out for our notices, future, uh, workshops, meetings, and, uh, guys, talk about it.
No, there's no action that can be made, so this is just a workshop discussion, um, I do want to note that a lot of the concerns that were brought up, um, with, regardless of the, of the, uh, issues that were discussed tonight, we are addressing the zoning ordinance as well, uh, as part of all of these updates to the ordinances, because the zoning is only one piece of the puzzle. We have submitted ordinances that we have to follow, as well as, like, the structural design guidelines, so those are all being updated. As we go through the zoning process, to make sure that everything is in compliance, and that everything is consistent with each other. But there's some things that we don't have the ability to regulate as we are adopted with the current codes that we have. So that is why, uh, some of these projects that come forward, they don't have certain requirements, or certain things that they have to be, because they are currently not required by our ordinance, so that's why we're working diligently to try and get these adopted and enforced, so that way, all future development will have to comply with the new standards, which have a higher standard of weight, if that helps.
I will say that, uh, I'm going to tea and roll before the day, and, uh, for the first time in my six school years, that Caldwell was like at five thousand people inside the city limits, so, uh, a little population marker is officially way off. So, uh, folks who come to Caldwell, um, um, there's people in the street that I don't know, haven't met, uh, and we may have been here for several years, but again, uh, we are live at five thousand people inside the city limits, and, uh, so, welcome our new neighbors to Caldwell, and, uh, zoning is needed and organized. So, again, thank you all very much for coming, for your input, it is valuable, and if you have any concerns, please address them to Boris at the Hall and Hill Fisher, thank you for having the nice job, James.
Yeah, you know, you know, my son is married, going to tape class now.
Oh, really? I, I, I suggest this here, I was, uh, Leslie Fagin, she goes, she took a picture of herself with her ring, she goes, send him this, and tell him that I got a ring next to him. I said, hi, he knows you, Kate, he knows. She might already know.
She might know, but she may not.
That it was the, like, your city utility bill, there's always information, all sorts of news, information.
Big mom, yeah, that big mom.
Your bill payer, okay, okay.
Didn't get you, I didn't know we even got it.
Well, thank you for saying that, so, thank you.